You guys were discussing important stuff.
Yeah.
Things always early on my clock, ain't it?
We got twenty-five till.
Way too early.
That's why it is like my own late at work.
I will not be at the meeting, have the flu, don't think anyone could care to get me, get it from me. Have about a hundred and one fever.
Who's that?
When he went to bed last night. Boy, I just seen how it checked.
Maybe he didn't wake up.
How did he only have a hundred and one fever? Right or?
Oh, by the way, I want to make sure everybody knows I'm not armed.
Go put that either.
I'm not armed.
Alright, okay.
I've got a flashlight and I got an extra magazine, but I'm not armed.
Call meeting order. Public comment? Any reports, Alan G. you wanna?
Don't really have anything at this time, I don't know if, um, Augie had anything that Billy Anna brought up or any of the crew during, whenever they had that insurance meeting. I didn't hear anything, I asked her if there was anything that she had, I didn't think there was anything. The next step is probably try and, wanna try to get their calendar from them again on the insurance aspect. Just to kinda get an idea of when we need to start doing all this stuff, cause it'll start happening down here in, before too long as far as when we have to talk about all our bids in and all of our specs in. I got hit up a little bit, uh, and I probably don't want to, but some people were asking me, had some people ask me about ordinances for the county. And, uh, I think I'm that, I think I'm that sure as a part of it. So I'll just throw that out there, just in case we need, need to look at that. I'm not sure even where we'd start, when I went to the meeting, the UCCI meeting, uh, that was a big issue with, uh, a lot of counties there, because a lot of counties do have different, um, specific land use ordinances, you know, what you can put where and how you can put where and what you have to do. We have some of that with our ride away system within our, our roads, but whether or not we'd wanna get into that, that's a, that's a whole other whack.
Is this zoning that you're talking about?
Yeah, ordinance, ordinance for zonings and for land usage, you know, that type of stuff, so. So, and we, like I said, we, we very little have, very, have very little of that, uh, only good, that I understand anyway with roads, but those were the only two things I would.
You mean like putting, uh, business in places shouldn't be, or something like that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, more like, um, one of the premises even on, on county, where county and city are close and it's a county, uh, county controlled ground and the buildings look absolutely terrible and they may be rat infested and everything else. And the city doesn't have any control they set over that, but whether or not the county should ever look at, at that, but then you're getting to the people, you know, in the country like we get in with our animal control. You know, if I live ten miles away out in the country and I got an old shed out in my backyard.
Right.
I don't care, if I wanna throw junk in my old shed and risk that it's gonna fall down on it, there's a side of me that's why I live out there, so I can throw junk in my shed.
Or then you probably open up a can of worms on mobile homes and things like that.
I mean, yeah, it, uh, all I did was throw it out there.
I think Parrish does have a certain amount of area around the, the town, but.
Well, yeah, either in the west end, it's, you never know when you're in the city that you're used to be.
There are certain things like, you know, my, my, I feel some of us thing that they can control certain things, but, uh, but they, I, I don't think they have certain rights as far as demolition and things of that nature, so, I don't, anyway. Throw that up, I did my, leave my thing.
So there's nothing, and, and just to clarify on that, there's nothing, cause I know at one point, like, they had, we had a junkyard about, I don't know, sixteen mile out there where, that's better than what it was.
Right.
But it got pretty bad at one time, now, there isn't, there are no.
Yes, there is, there's like fencing ordinance, there's state law that says that has to be fenced.
But that's not county.
Because that's on a state highway.
But that's not county.
Well, anywhere has to be fenced.
It has to be fenced, if you're gonna have a junkyard.
I don't know.
I think that's.
I just know sometimes whenever they border, my understanding when it borders any state highway or federal highway, whatever, you know, like that.
Well, that's, that's what I want.
That's, that's their, that's their maybe.
Okay.
You know, the only thing I could see at times, since we do have a public health department, if there was a risk to individuals or health or community, uh, that may be an avenue that they could step in on, but again, I.
You mean fire, water?
We do.
We actually have an ordinance.
We do have a nuisance ordinance.
But that's through our, our health department, didn't have to go through that, that's, I thought it was.
We have an ordinance.
You know, is that?
That is.
Okay, that's what I thought too, but so, and that's kind of, kind of not with the zoning, but it is kind of one of the deals that we.
You remember when Lady Bird Johnson made everybody fence in all their, that was years and years ago, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, she.
Andy and I don't remember that stuff.
Championed that.
I was more on.
Ben knows, Ben remembers it well. Yeah. Mike? Well, not this time. Dan?
I have a couple things, uh, animal shelter, uh, Andrew called the other day, she had received a donation from a, uh, person and she would like to build a new pad and then fist in there, so if somebody's gonna adopt the dog, they would have a area where they take the dog and sort of get used to it, see if the dogs don't like him. And I told her, Billy, it would, why don't you go through the channels with the money, so.
You got the money?
She said she was doing that, yeah, she's already got the money.
Yeah, this person's already donating that money, yeah.
Right.
And just, she just needs to run it into the, the county.
She said she was doing that, so, so be sure you do that. Uh, health department, Andy and I are still working on getting the, uh, heating and cooling replaced, we met with, uh, the guy from, uh, Mitsubishi and, uh, contractor from Taro, was it last week? Still very impressed with the group, impressed with the Mitsubishi guy, seemed to know what he's doing. The guy from Taro was trained by Mitsubishi to put in the system, so, and then, uh, we talked a little bit with Don Finney and he said he'd have to hire some extra people to do, I, my bone opinion, don't the, well. I don't know, I don't say it, but, uh, we're still in the process, and hopefully by next month, uh, we can make some type of decision. I did talk to Augie about the procedure, once we decide what we wanna do, he said we probably should open the bids at the health department, pick out basically one we want and then bring it to the board to, uh, go down. And also I talked to Ben, I'd like to have him involved also, cause that's his expertise, kinda help pick out the ones that'll work there, so. So right now, maybe next month we'll have a decision of some type.
Didn't wanna advertise that meeting.
Pardon?
Didn't wanna advertise that meeting.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I thought about that too, yeah, yeah, and I'll go sit down with Augie and put what the, uh, what, now, it should be in the paper as far as the bids, the, uh, when they do and so forth, and say we'll have an open meeting, everyone's invited, one go open the bids.
What's the, what are requirements to do, to do that, I mean, do you just advertise here in Nager County, is that?
Yeah, and it needs.
Beacon or Prairie, both, what happened, yeah, what is that?
Well, it needs to be a, yeah, you just gotta publish it.
Okay.
I mean, simple as that.
Probably can pick up their bid specs at county clerk or wherever it is, or at the health department, wherever you decide.
So we'll, so we'll have to have bid specs.
Some sort.
Some sort.
I mean, heat, cool, X amount of building, if I have nothing bid spec, uh, some, some square foot building. I know that's.
The more accurate your bid specs, the more confident you can be that you're getting people bidding on the same thing.
I'm kinda waiting to hear back from Mitsubishi, I have just an idea of what's required and what's gonna cost, which is not gonna be a bid.
Right.
It's gonna be, so we maybe could use part of that as our bid specs.
And if they tell you, like you said, if they tell you a half a million, you know right off, you're probably not gonna be able to do it.
But I got, yeah.
Uh, we're figuring between a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, that all we can afford.
Yeah, and I think they talked as though that was due.
Around a hundred, yeah, and beside put it on the ground, not on the roof too, which would help.
Lot better.
So maybe by next meeting, maybe we'll have some idea of what we're gonna do.
Dan, you guys need to put something down, so we can get it in the paper, what you want, basically what you just said, you know, I.
That's.
In absent of specs, cause you're gonna have those, are you?
We won't have, we'll have a, a basic idea of what we need in there, but nothing concrete, that would be a problem.
The way I'm thinking is, if we'd set that to run through the health department, so you'd go to the health department. We, normally you, for something like that, then that's where you would pick up your bid specs.
Well, but not to interrupt, McClintock has offered to come over there.
No, has he, I haven't talked to him.
And he said he'd be happy to come over and look at that for you. And, and.
And make you up some bid specs, thinking?
Well, uh, yeah, if it's, I mean, I'm not, I'm sure he's not gonna do it for absolutely nothing, but, I mean, he, he knows the building and it's not that far for him to travel, I mean, I mean, I mean, he'd give us for a dollar travel, but.
Well, when I get ready for that, I'll go talk to him.
Just asking, and he's down to a couple of guys and himself, and he's looking for work.
Okay, good.
He, uh, he understands a lot, I, I, I don't know that he's actually got a designation as a structural engineer.
No, yes, he does.
Does he?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
We had him tell us that the building that we put the library in, Chrisman was structurally sound, and he wrote up a, a good report, you know, that the floor joists were this big and this far apart and they'd handled so many pounds per square foot, he wrote up.
Now, he is a structural engineer, he's not a mechanical engineer, is he?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
It could be a mechanical engineer and a structural engineer, because that may be a flow, one way or the other, I mean, it could be.
He may be both.
Well, does, is there anything that says that you could write up the bid specs?
I'm gonna say, I gotta talk to Ben, gotta help this out.
Or, or, or him, or Alan write up the bid specs, I mean, I don't know that there's a law that he'll gotta have.
I'd be glad.
Those electrical bid specs.
I did talk to Mark too, but he, he doesn't have licensing or even, that's what liability parks, that's gonna be on the ground now, not gonna be on the roof, so you're worried about.
Well, that's one of my questions, is does somebody have to be the specific?
Yeah, right, I wouldn't think so.
To write up bid specs, to say this is what we need.
Like Ben said though, I agree, the more specific you are on your, if you're gonna go, if you're gonna have specs, the more specific you are on your specs, the better chance you have people bidding.
Same thing.
What they're gonna, yeah, yeah.
Right, that's why I think we need to have bid specs, I don't know that we have to have a guy out of Taro.
I think the guy from Mitsubishi will.
Indianapolis, come on, you know, something.
Yeah, but I, I was, it was interesting, cause, I mean, I've got one guy looking at heating and cooling, the old, put in the furnace, forced air, duct work, and these guys come in, and it's a whole different kind of a system. And it, it's different than, I was, I was familiar with the old systems that, first off, they first came out, the split systems, you could only cool with.
Right.
Then now you can heat and cool with them, and then, in first systems, you could only use one head, now you put, this Mitsubishi system, I think they said you could put about fifteen.
Four, five in every room.
Every, two units, and they'd all have their own little.
Turbostat, yeah.
It's a TV pipe, you don't have duct work, just run a pipe to the head in each room.
Yeah.
So you don't have the duct work you gotta worry about, sound very, very.
How, and Ben, you may, now, how efficient are these things when it gets really cold, that's my concern.
Are they electric, you guys?
They're electric, they're like, it's a heat pump.
No, they don't have electric heat, they have, they're a heat pump, which, and heat pumps, these are supposed to be really efficient.
What I'm saying is, are these like emergency heat in a residency?
No.
On a le, cause those aren't very inefficient if you don't have.
No, no.
They were saying.
They don't have a backup heat in.
They're saying about fifteen below zero, it's gonna produce heat.
They can keep, yeah, they can keep it warm supposedly fifteen below.
Okay.
Right.
I'm putting two of them in the firehouse and I've got, but all of them I'm putting in are, are going to be put in this year, so I can't answer.
I mean, they say they're good fifteen below, I, I wanna make sure they are.
Well, they're saying that it may be fifty degrees in the room, but still producing some heat.
Yeah.
Not like probably you would have, but it's above freezing.
Right.
But still producing some heat.
They have all those space heaters in there.
They're really efficient when they're in their temperature range.
Okay, my, my thought was, it was like the residential electric, total electric heat, if you've got the house just totally that much insulation, you could heat it with a candle, but I've noticed the guys that have built those over the years said, you know, they wouldn't do it over again, because when emergency heat kicks on, you're talking about some tremendous electrical. And it kicks on usually down about zero.
Above.
You're right, I was gonna say about, the old ones kicked on like twenty.
So, but this is totally different, I, I didn't, I didn't.
They're just, it's basically the same system, but they're so efficient now, that even at minus degrees, you get, you can still pump heat out of that.
The compressor, it changes, it's DC with an inverter and it changes, if it's, if you're calling for a ton of air conditioning, that's all it putting out, if you are, if you're talking five ton, it puts it out, it, it changes the, the speed of the compressor.
I see.
The thing kinda runs all the time, doesn't it? I mean, a little bit, and then as, as the load increases, it increases.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's my understanding of it.
But it's, there's no gas involved, it's total electric?
It's all.
Right.
Okay.
I'll try calling a guy again, he's probably gonna give us some type of specs.
Yeah.
And some idea of what it's gonna cost, but it won't be, you know, concrete. Hopefully have it by the next meeting.
Well, have what by the next meeting?
Uh, from him, from Mitsubishi.
Okay, don't say because.
Just an estimate, an estimate.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you wanted all this bid spec and all that ran in the newspaper, and then you gotta give people time?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
I think at this point, he's gonna give us an idea of what he, he would charge us to put a system, and if it's accept, you know, if it's within our, what we think we could reasonably spend, then I think we go to the process next stage, when it would be advertising. In other words, if I got one guy says he'll, he can do it at a price that's acceptable to us, then we should move the ball on down the court to the next stage, which would be let, let some other people do a bid on it. At least we know we're in the ballpark, if, if he comes in at five hundred thousand with that, okay, we don't need to, we don't need to advertise it.
Get more space here.
Yeah. Which is what it has anyway, every room has space.
Yeah, they've got electric heating out, okay.
Yeah. Now, they got the bench covered up and, you know, a lot of, it's amazing.
I just wanna be careful that we're not, that we're not getting into bid rigging and things like that.
No.
No.
So.
No, don't get into that.
And that, I, you know, I'm just throwing it out there.
We don't do it on purpose, I mean, we may make a mistake and do it.
Don't even do that, you'll get crucified for that.
We'll be very cautious.
Understand bid rigging before you open your mouth.
I've heard that from someone else.
Yeah, common sense and bid rigging are not in the same category, right?
But, right, we'll have something, we hope, by the next meeting or night, so.
Anything else?
Well, I think that's it, I gotta talk to him after today.
And?
I got a couple things, um, I had Parrish Refrigeration get back with a power vent for the courthouse. Eighty-seven fifty, and that's, this is what the unit looks like.
For the exhaust?
For the exhaust. I didn't think it was gonna be quite that high, but he said, in a commercial building like that, and with one that size, and that was okay, or actually that was kinda specked out by, uh, while the plane, that's who made the boiler, so they kinda spec that specific power vent out for it.
They go out the side, instead of going up through.
Up through the roof, that comes out the side, right, it comes out the basement.
Does it push or does it pull, Andy?
It pushes, it's, it's a lot like a, well, does it push or pull?
No, it pulls.
It pulls, it's a lot like a, uh, power, you know how, uh, new furnaces, you got a vent comes on and then your furnace will light and it, yet blows that out, well, this is somewhat the same deal, only it's able to handle hot gas versus, uh, or hot exhaust versus.
What, what's your opinion, Mr. Chairman, is that something we need to do, or is that something that's, is that something that we'd like to do?
Seems kinda pricey to you?
Well, it, well, does it cost efficiency, the vent going up?
That's probably a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, tearing that all out and making it out of stainless.
And it's, that thing snaked through there, that's a mess, the way that it's snaked through the, goes out the stair wall, it's got.
Back to the judges, back to the courtroom, curves, highways, goes up the other way, and then goes straight up in here.
So if we ever ban it, we can make a kitty bright out of it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't send a kitten down there, I'll tell you that.
Pretty small one.
I wouldn't send Bruno down there, as small as he is, I wouldn't keep bother about where that wood comes there, I think you feel it.
A little weak.
Okay.
But it's definitely, now, here's something else, I've got one of the judges, I, I, I don't know, I've, I've been looking, that's, that's eighty-seven fifty, to replace that, I've got one of the. Judges that's looking, he wants to do something about the air conditioning in the downstairs courthouse, and, and has he, he, because he, he says he can't run those air conditioners, he can't hear them talk.
Well, he's right.
So he's got, he's gotta shut it off, so, he wants to do something in that office now, or, or in that courtroom, and which would be something, I think, a, a place for a split unit.
Right, I think so too.
Now, do you spend that kinda money, you got basically three other offices in the downstairs, and I, I told him I wanna bid on, on what it costs to put that split unit in that courtroom, courtroom, but you got, you've got the county clerk, the circuit clerk, and the sheriff's office all around, those are the only other buildings on that floor, aren't they? And they've got, uh.
I talked, I talked a split system just for that courtroom, and if you did for the others, put.
And then go ahead and.
Well, I wanted, I'd wanna check on, I'd wanna personally check on this, because that's pretty hot heat comes out of there, somehow they're.
He said that, yeah.
Somehow you're gonna have to keep, be able to.
Keep people away from it?
There, yeah.
I know, I thought the same thing. Whether you'd have to put some kind of fence, fence in front of it to keep people from.
Be that hot, Ben?
Oh, yeah.
Out of, out of them boilers, yeah, that comes out.
Have you seen what comes out that roof?
Yeah, this ain't like a ninety plus furnace, this is.
Yeah, well, is there some way we can redirect that, it back into the courtroom or something?
So, what you guys, I'm, I'm, you said the difference between a push and a pull. Is that, I thought you were talking about this thing.
I wasn't.
And you said that's a pull?
Yeah, it pulls through the boiler rather than pushing it.
So the exhaust.
It'll be on the exhaust side of it.
In other words, such that the fan is out, on the end out here and it pulls it out, is that the way?
That's why I need to take this and buy it out, I don't.
Cause I was wondering if that made a difference on the amount of heat going out, does it make any difference?
No, you have to take, on that type of boiler, you have to take so much out, it has to have a certain amount going through, out the door.
What produces too much heat?
Well, yes, it produces a lot of heat.
It's just a, like a eighty percent efficient unit, rather than not, see your furnaces that you're talking about, use a two inch or three inch PVC pipe for exhaust, because they have a secondary heat exchanger that takes that heat out, and you really only have eighty or ninety degree.
More moisture or anything else, isn't it?
Right.
Needs to come out of there.
And you're not doing that with this, you're just taking the.
Whatever comes out of the boiler is, is waste, it just goes right up that pipe, and there's probably a lot of carbon monoxide and that kinda stuff, so we really couldn't redirect it into the courtroom.
But you're saying that the.
Small, the clerks.
That's who they called, and their person got home, they wanted to check with the boiler manufacturer, to see what they would suggest, and that's the one they suggested.
Can we jump, like, get on another second, we were talking about, when, when we went on our tour, and they were talking about that lower courtroom, that was, both of them, I talked to Matt and we talked to Steve, and they both said that same thing, that they cannot.
Can't, when it's hot, they shut them off, when it gets really hot.
If it gets hot during the summertime, uh, I mean, that's what I'm wondering, if that's, if that's something, do, do we have any idea on like, what those things would cost, when we were talking about that split unit, particularly?
He said, I, I, and I, I told them to give me an estimate, I haven't yet, but he thought, well, like fifty-six, sixty-five hundred, something like that for a unit for that particular courtroom.
And then, then we don't, but that wouldn't involve any of this other stuff we're talking about, that's just that unit.
That's stuff in that one particular.
To make that room work.
We couldn't take, we, we couldn't feasibly take from right over that courtroom, now, what's up, isn't that the judges' chambers right over that lower courtroom?
They're on the backside, they're under, they're on top of the circuit port, aren't they?
The judges' chambers are, yes.
What I'm thinking is, is there any way we can get heat and cooling from up there and just put a couple of units?
I don't think you can do, cause those are size, now, and, and that's part, the whole upstairs is climate control, right, and the court, the courtroom upstairs is.
That's what I.
Heating, heating and air conditioning.
Yes, I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, because that's where we got into the thing, when we went into the probation department, and they had all those.
All the heaters and all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, uh, yes.
And, and I, and we were supposed to be running all, yeah.
When you get a price on that courtroom, get it for heat and cooling, because it doesn't cost very much.
No, I know, to do the whole thing, I said I wanted one, that would heat and cool that, so. Anyway.
We'll get, we'll get them everywhere and then find out if they don't work like they say.
I know, that's what I was.
So I said, let's just do them, that's what Kenny, we're talking about windows, all this other stuff, I like his, that plane, like, let's just try this, see how those work, and we'll go to the next, next phase.
I know they're great on air conditioning.
Are they, are they economical?
Yes.
These, well, that's what I'm saying, in lieu of, like, if we try this in that area, and then if we wanna expand around to, if we need to, around other office buildings, then we know, is it better than what we have?
Yes, it's, they're very, I know.
The cost of running those big, big window units at a hundred and ten might be.
Usually, they're quite, well, even at two twenty.
Right, might be a lot less expensive.
Those are any of those are two twenty, but I don't think they would be, anyway, so, Andy's done a lot of work on that stuff, thank you, Andy.
Uh, one more thing too, I'm having, I'm going back and forth with the guy to give us survey of the, the roof on the courthouse, and, I don't know, I can pass this around, he, he's had, he said he thinks he needs a hundred and twenty foot lift to inspect that roof, and I think what he's talking about, I'm, is going clear to the top of the bell tower for a hundred and twenty, that's a long, that's a heck of a lift.
Well, he, they just gotta go vert, you know, horizontal too, Andy.
Yeah, but a hundred and twenty foot.
My fifty foot lift won't even go up to the top of one of the houses, cause I can't, I gotta stand outside of all the small sidewalks and things.
How long is your?
It's a fifty foot, but it's a, but it weighs so many ton, and I can't get, there's, I can only get it in the yard without, cause I'll break all the concrete and everything trying to get up close to the house to get it up there, so, in theory, that, you may need a hundred and twenty foot to get to the center of the courthouse.
Now, I'm gonna investigate a little bit, I called Mark Kay and talked to him, he thought that was an awful big one.
It won't be cheap.
Well, I know, cause.
Two, three hundred dollars a day, probably.
More like five thousand.
Yeah.
A day?
It's gonna be expensive.
That's right, yeah, I think that's.
And then closest you can get one champagne, you know, I said, I said Tarahoe, and he said he can't, you don't have anything that big.
How about, how about RP Lumber, how high do they go up on their, on their putting roofs on?
The what?
Don't they have lifts, the, the new lumber place out there?
I don't know, do they rent lifts?
I don't know if they rent them, I'm just, I mean, they may, I'm just saying.
Well, Misco doesn't have a hundred and twenty, then, they have.
No, I didn't know how high those type, people put roofs on, you know, if they just put them on single stories, double stories.
Probably single, I mean, they're not.
Or if they put them on an Destro.
Well, then you gotta have the truck to haul, I mean, it's, you know, you're talking, what, uh.
Well, you got a hundred and twenty foot lift, you gotta sell it.
You've got a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand pounds.
Yeah, that, that's why I was wondering if they have some.
You don't have to get clear to the top.
Well, that's what I, and.
And we do have, somewhere there is a picture showing the heights and that, and then.
Where, yeah, where is that, that's what I want, that's.
It's in the booklet from, that which Jenny made us for, on Architects where.
Would Calvin have it?
Calvin, is that who's got it?
Calvin wasn't involved in that.
You think I got it?
Uh, yeah, I, I, it may be in your office then, under that bell tower repair and that.
So you think you may have it up there, cause if I can get, if I can get that, if I could get a schematic to him of something like that, I think, I, I feel like that's a, that's an awful long lift.
Well, but there again, he's gonna have to set outside the circle.
Yeah, but if we get, if we find out it's a eighty foot, somebody like Randy Peterson could tell us what he needed, or somebody in, right?
Yeah, there's a guy that knows more about lifts than anybody. Yeah, there's a guy that knows more about lifts than anybody in this room, so.
And he could tell us what you.
What would, and good, that's a good resource there. I'd use him.
And where to get it.
And where to get it.
Yeah.
They supply them.
Well, they, they, they lease all theirs, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that stuff is on hold. Might be able to work, deal with it now. Anyway, so I'm still working on that. I'm trying to get.
They donated their time putting, uh, Liberty back up there, White Circuit.
Really? I might get ahold of Randy. Have to see if I can get those. Do you know, can I get the, is that something you need to look into? Or you, I mean, look to find them? Or do you think if I come up, we can open it something up?
I think we can find them relatively easily. At least I know where to look.
Okay.
We do not have to go to the basement.
Okay. That's always interesting. Okay, I guess that's probably what I'm at this point.
Sheriff, you got something?
Huh?
Do you have anything for us?
I just need to see, you guys, the last meeting I went here about the, you picked a panel that if you wanted to do that thing in Colorado, if you picked a panel.
What do they require? Do they want you and the jail administrator?
Well, depends on the facility. I mean, in our case, the jail administrator wouldn't be a, I mean, cause the jail administrator is just a kind of a record keeper at our place. Well, a lot, well, a lot of them, the jail administrator basically runs a jail. You know, in our case, it'd be sheriff and three board members or two board members and consultant.
How about the county treasurer? Is that, is that important or?
That's one of the people that can go if.
Jeff is the one heading that up and he's kind of, got the flu. I'll have him get ahold of you and see what.
How soon before you need that information there?
Every end of fifth of May, I believe. I should bring that thing with me. It's sitting on my desk.
We'll get you a answer here pretty quick then. And they won't, they'll take as many as four, cost free?
Four, yeah. While I was out there, I did get a lot of those. The, uh, I guess I have got it here.
And Ron's needing that too whenever you can get. He, the thing you sent, he didn't have any, it was really nice, but it didn't tell him where to apply.
Well, you gotta get into it and it's an internal thing. You gotta.
Okay.
That's why I say it took, I'll, I'll just send him a copy of this.
Okay, he, yeah, cause he's real interested in down there.
Enroll them, okay, I'm, I'm on five twenty-two. So maybe the twenty seconds is when we gotta have to know. Twenty-two hour train.
You're in Austin going?
When is it, when is, we don't know when it would be, do we? They'll just tell.
The. Twenty-four through the twenty-seventh.
If you think I'm the, the best guy to go, then yes, I'll go. But if you think there's another board member that would be, if Carl would be better, in your opinion, cause he actually has spent more time in that jail than I have.
Not being the harvest season, would it?
Oh, it could be.
August twenty-four?
He won't, he won't be. That's, that's when that corn is growing well. Hopefully, hopefully it's not burning up and hopefully it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, that's pretty slight.
Team members must have key policymaking and decision-making roles in the new, new job project. Through the sheriff, director of corrections, jail administrator, county commissioner, county supervisor, county executive or administrators. Basically whoever refills.
And keep in, keep in mind, Donnie has a heck of a lot of knowledge about that jail. Plus, he's, he's a money guy too, so that might be a.
Finance something that.
Yeah. Donnie, Donnie's worked there how many years and he knows it inside and out. He, he knows what we need.
Twenty-seven years in there.
Yeah. Plus, he, he, he's gonna be one of the guys that's probably involved in some of the money, so. If not, yeah, if entirely.
But on the flip side of that, when I was out there last week, I did a lot of their materials that they require. I, I've already got it at the jail to start going through. I mean, all their books. I mean, they've got a library that's as big as this whole office building. All that stuff's free for the taking and I just.
Loaded up.
Grabbed everything and take it to them. They, they ship it back for you and.
Have you read most of it?
Read it over with you.
Well, at least he's, you haven't called the governor yet, you know?
You don't know that.
I was gonna ask that.
I actually talked to the governor a couple weeks ago in Springfield.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah. She said, you know where Paris is? She said, my dad is a politician.
Well, he was here at the Lincoln Day dinner and gave us a talk, so you know.
He was impressed with him.
Uh, Sheriff, can you give us a, are you ready to give us a synopsis on the radio situation? What? I'm looking at money. I mean, you're the one that has to live with it, but what's it gonna end up?
This radio system is such a mess right now, but you know, that three thousand dollar fix is already turned into.
More.
Oh, I mean, hell, of course, they told us they wanted this routing stuff done or finer thing. When we done that, when we done that, we burned up a, one of the repeaters.
Because?
Because we was pinging on it every, you hook that up to a computer, you drive, drive around that radio in your dash and it pings every thirty seconds. Well, evidently that burnt the repeater out. So due to conflict and nobody, right hand not knowing what the left hand's doing, that weekend, the radio went out. So they called Supreme. Supreme said, okay, we'll be down. Wasn't working. They shut it off. But evidently when they shut it off, it puts a light on so you know it's off. Well, then the next shift come in, they seen it wasn't working. They called Barback. Barback come in, seen it wasn't working. They climbed up and take it down and take it away. But sure not even supposed to be touching it. So they're, and they started working on it before we got things straightened out. So they had a fifteen hundred dollar bill that kind of jammed us in the hind end before we could do anything about it.
Well, let me, let me ask.
I kinda think, I'm starting to believe the Supreme radio or used car salesman and just, you know, bigger and bigger. Cause new antenna is gonna, we can fix it for forty-five hundred. We can replace it for fifteen thousand. Barbacks, they called the other day. I said, hey, the murder rolls guy's gonna be here in a couple of weeks. Be down here for two or three weeks. We'd like to meet with him, see if we can help you out. Supreme did call me a couple of weeks ago. Some deal, they okayed it with Verizon or Verizon or Cell One, whatever antennas we're using.
Cell One.
Cell One. Instead of hooking up to our deal, they run a wire splitter from our repeater to their repeater. And we're bouncing off, they charge us twenty bucks a month for, per antenna, that's sixty bucks a month. So I'm not sure if they work. We'd be money ahead just to pay them to rent their antennas. Instead of us messing with them.
Cell One?
Yeah.
And you know they're gonna be, second one of them will down, somebody's gonna fix it.
Right.
Well, let me ask you this. I, I was in, talked to one of your guys and if you had a ClearTalk portable for everybody and a ClearTalk portable at the console, wouldn't, would that solve a lot of your problem? Cause your ra- your radios work a certain area, but it's when the guys get out of the car and get on the, on this system portable, that's where they get into trouble.
Well, and that's, I went and talked to Barback before I went to ClearTalk, but I've looked into the, I got some stuff for ClearTalk. I don't know if we need a portable or for legality purposes stuff. If that needs to be hooked in, somehow hooked into our base system for the, for the recordings and all that stuff.
I got you.
But I do.
I never thought about that.
I do like the, uh, thing you use of maybe our.
Your car radios as your.
Car radios, for car radios, then use our swap over. Of course, we can get them, like I say, with the phone and everything else in them. That would kill two birds with one stone, that's.
Right, right, right.
Of course, if your radio's not working, chances are your phone won't work either. But I think I, when we do that, we actually rent the whole, we rent the whole outfit. We don't buy it. I mean, we're, we're renting radios, we're renting power space basically with ClearTalk. I haven't talked with them yet. I don't know the whole detail on it.
Well, you buy, it, normally you buy the radio system and then you rent, it, for each unit, it costs you so much a month.
Okay.
That's negotiable with a big, with a big outfit.
What, what was wrong with that? She used a telephone, said you talked about in negotiations once, that's.
Just expense right now. I mean, it's, nobody's giving us any deal on telephones.
Oh, but that would be adequate or better or if you, if, yeah?
Well, I mean, I think telephones would be better than our radio system right now, but then you've gotta have a dispatcher. You know, I mean, if you're gonna pay sixty bucks a month for a telephone, you can probably pay forty bucks a month.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if, a telephone's gonna cost you sixty dollars a month, that's probably not what you.
Well, in essence, if you pick up any cell phone and dial nine-one-one, something costs you anything. And I understand.
I, I tried that one time and thing is, it don't always go to Edgar County.
Yeah, go ahead, make go ahead. Yeah, make go Douglas or make go to Vigo, yeah.
Years ago, they tried that. Well, you know, I'm not buying a cell phone just so I can call them. So I carried, went and got one of those back phones out of the basement. Plugged in a cigarette lighter, it worked. It usually worked. I'd call nine-one-one. One night I hit Douglas County. I thought, ah, I better quit this.
How did, you said somebody called to get Barback. You don't have a, a system where they have to call you before they call them?
Well, that's the problem. They should have called either me or Greg that night, or Nat, me, Greg or Nanette. One of the three of us should have been called instead of the way it was handled.
You've got that correct to now.
I think I've got that.
I hope you got it.
I should have stuck that fifteen hundred dollar bill in the drawer. I said, you want this one payment or ten payments out of this?
To Barback, they're not authorized to make that decision.
Right.
So you're still working on the phone.
So we're working on the, we have the radio flash phone now.
Have, have we got that? Have you got the grant submitted for that twenty-five thousand dollars?
Still waiting on the, uh, the bids for the painting bid and like, electrician never has to go.
I know. I'm working on, uh, I'm working with the guy, Kelly, whatever his last name is, Kelly, um, over at.
Charleston.
Charleston. I think I'm gonna be able to have, yeah, I think they'll be taking care of.
You have talked to him then?
I have talked to him. I think he'll be taking care of this week actually. He's given me some guidelines that I need to work with and I, I think we're, I should be able to submit that. I have the paperwork this week on, I hope.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think that's it right now.
All of you, you got anything?
Nope. Questions for me?
How come you don't have anything?
Well, sir, because, uh, cause the two guys aren't here. I don't know.
You're an elected official, tell him whatever you want.
Well, let's see.
Don't make up something.
Yeah, all right.
I don't care what he says, but you don't have to make up anything.
We need to go into an executive session for just a short minute, so, yeah. Oh, you don't need to make up something if we don't, just quick take time.
If you put that in there.
I would, I would make that.
Do any old business, bring up an old business. Somebody asked about the, uh, Evergreen tree we was gonna put on the courthouse.
I reached out to Randy this week. I found a tree.
Okay, I just wonder if somebody asked about it.
Some, just read between the lines here, guys. Somebody's gotta negotiate for this tree besides me.
Who's got it?
Uh, it's down at, oh, dang, gone it, Andy, you know what I'm talking, it's on the Sulphur Springs Road.
About, Bowyer, Bowyer.
Oh, Bob Bowyer. And I'm telling you what, there is a hundred of the most beautiful blue spruce. They're so big. And he, he, uh, we need to approach him. Uh, I, the one I want is just, it's just the right size to move. Uh, what we'll have to do is we can't move it with a truck. We're gonna have to dig it out.
Digger thing.
Well, we're have to, we, we can't move it with a tree truck. We're gonna have to dig it out with a backhoe and put it on, on a flatbed and move it in here, but it's beautiful.
When's the ripe time year to do?
Uh.
Right.
Right now or this fall.
Or this fall, right.
That tree's already started to candle. I couldn't.
Well, you're almost past that point.
Yeah.
It's gonna be this fall.
We couldn't get it done. And we, and really, we, I'd like to move it this fall so we don't have to water it all summer. See, that's the thing.
Okay.
And, and I'm gonna.
Too big to move with tree spade?
Yeah, well, it, it, you could, no, I could move it, but it won't, it won't get as big a root ball if I dig it up with a, you know what I'm saying?
How tall are you talking about here?
Huh? It's, it's probably twenty foot. And it's.
And we want something that big sitting?
Well, no, I actually like something smaller, but this is such a nice tree. And if we do it right, we can.
Careful, that nice tree can die.
Yeah. Well, your brother taught me how to do it and, and I believe he knows what he's talking about, so.
Why's, why's he looking that way?
Well, cause he's seen his brother killing number trees probably. But, but he did, he did tell me, he said, well, don't move it now, Mike. Move it in the fall. So you don't have to water it all summer, you know, and stress it. And then it'll kinda get, you can get it watered in over the winter and then it'll be ready for the, for next spring, so. Uh, but there's all kinds of options, but I need to get with Randy and I, I reached out for him and he hadn't called me back, so.
So I guess your answer is, it's been worked on.
I just wonder if somebody asked.
Yeah, we're working on. I've got some ideas on how to do it. And, and my biggest fear is what we're gonna get into. And Ernie told me, you wouldn't believe what's in that yard right there where they dug. So, uh, it, I mean, there's bricks, there's all kinds of, we may hit, hopefully hit a casket full of gold or something.
In the courtyard?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that means you're gonna have to go in the yard and dig a hole with a backhoe too.
And that's not a problem. I can get, with a small backhoe, get in there, no problem at all, so. We can just dig right up.
So is the, is the goal then in general to put a tree there that's gonna be there for a while?
Yeah.
And, and, and I know it looks so beautiful last year.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure they can this so that I can explain it, cause somebody else asked me about it too, and. So the goal would be to even put like something as big as a twenty-foot tree in there and out and just see if it's gonna grow for the next.
Well, here's.
Five years, ten.
Here's how she explained to me, and here's how I've seen it work in, in practicality. The smaller tree, you can take a tree that's this big around and you can take a tree that's this big around and plant them side by side. And in five years, they'll be the same size. Because the bigger the tree, it won't thrive. You gotta have the same size root ball. So when you take a smaller tree and get a huge root ball with it, it doesn't even know it's been moved. And it, it just prospers. When you take a big tree and you cut off two-thirds of the roots out around it, it has to repair itself and it just goes, I don't have a reason to live. It, it doesn't, it lives, but it just doesn't thrive. And I just show you.
I just wondered like where we'd put that. If you're talking about a twenty-foot tree, I'm thinking the width, you said a, a blue spruce?
Mm-hmm.
And the width at the bottom, would it basically, it's gonna stay the same?
Yeah, well.
Grow every year.
It's gonna grow, yeah.
I'm concerned, I'm a little.
I'm on this, I think.
Oh, you don't want it grown out over the sidewalks, what you're saying.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know where you put something like that to where it's not gonna be, I don't know. I think it's loud here.
It's probably not gonna get, in its lifetime, you're probably not gonna get a whole lot bigger than.
Small one gets out the sidewalk and you have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yet the years, remember?
Well, we'll all be sitting in nursing over then.
I won't be here, so.
Yeah, yeah, he'll be going.
What are you, fifteen years, so it's ten years or so.
Well, that's right, the place where the tree was last.
I don't think there is, I don't think we'll ever.
Nice place.
You don't think.
I don't think we'll ever get a bigger, you know, get that too big.
Well, it's also slow anyway.
Okay.
Blue spruce.
We'll have the building and grounds and the sheriff work on this.
Absolutely. It's not a, it's not an itch in the stomach exactly where that has to go, but in that section.
People trip trees for a living.
Yeah.
Well, and you'd have, have something to keep mine. You're gonna have to trim that every year if you want it to look like a Christmas tree.
Well, my authority has picked, it looks just like a Christmas tree now, doesn't it?
It is beautiful. And it's not been trimmed in probably twenty years. It's just a beautiful tree, so. It's, it was designed for a Christmas tree and it just outgrew it. And it's just, the one I'm looking at is beautiful.
So if you think it's twenty feet out in the wild, I bet it's like four thirty.
Did you wanna, did you wanna finish your motion?
And beauty's in the eye of the beholder.
I trust Mike on beauty.
Yeah, I do too.
Uh, I'd like to go into closed session, discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body and/or pending litigation.
Second.
Our motion is second to go into closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Oh, we are, we're gonna turn it on now.
Are we? Okay, we're back in regular session. I'd entertain any motions that anybody has.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, end this session, the study session.
I second it.
We've got a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting's over.